It's two o'clock.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Plermo is absent, Rowe, Melton, and Festerson is absent.
Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the remarks by Councilmember Rowe.
I believe this is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So in the middle of July, her raising our kids, the worst thing that any one of our kids could come to say to mom was, hey, I'm bored. Middle of July. Danny and Brick and I serve on the committee that we visit with the convention and year, uh, business group. And Erin O'Brien, who's a marketing director down there, put together a list of ten things to do in the middle of July in Omaha. So I thought I'd read them off for you. And they're fun. First one is to go Bobby. Discover on bike or walk the Bob Carey Bridge. Number two, stop and smell the roses. There are over 2,000 rose plants blooming at Lordson Garden in the middle of July. Sip an iced coffee. Who would have thought that one of the top baristas in the country is less than a mile away from here? Discover SUV. You can come out to my neighborhood and learn how to ride and navigate Lake Zirinsky on a stand-up paddleboard. Create your own ice cream crawl. And again, who would have thought you could start or finish your tour in Yelp's number one rated ice cream shop in the country here in Omaha? Vibe to live music and you all know where those are located. Check out the Garden of the Zodiac down in the old market passageway. Or sip a cocktail or a Diet Coke on a rooftop bar overlooking the downtown. Splash around in one of our free spray parks, the largest of which is at Miller Park. And if none of that works, go shopping.
I like that. Thank you, Councilmember Rowe. So, good afternoon. Welcome to the meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy of those in attendance, I would ask that everyone could please silence or turn off all of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers. Item six, to consider a class C liquor license for The Rack Wine and Spirits located at 1119 North 204th Avenue, Suite 102.
Open the public meeting. Are there any proponents? Hello?
Hello, I'm Paul Dawkins. I'm co-owner of The Rack Wine and Spirits, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you, Paul. And if you could, just for the record, could you please state your address?
13821 South 49th Street, Papillion, 68133.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down. Are there any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Row call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven, to consider a class I liquor license for First Round located at 3901 Farnum Street, Suite A.
Open the public meeting. Are there any proponents? Hi, if you could, just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Amanda Petersmith. I'm one of the co-owners of a bar restaurant in Blackstone called First Round, and the address is 3901 Farnum Street.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming down.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Are you here to answer any questions?
Here to answer any questions you might have for me.
All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Public meeting is closed. Row call.
Sorry.
Oh, I didn't see your, I, and it came up. My apologies.
That's all right.
Councilwoman Begley.
Thank you, Madam President. Amanda, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We had a nice chat on the phone the other day. And there's a lot of cool things that you told me that you're gonna be putting into this, a sports-themed bar and grill. You wanna give me a little cameo?
Yeah, give you my outfit pitch. Yeah, so this is an upscale nineties-themed sports bar and grill that will be opening in the Blackstone District. Vibe is gonna be all sports, so football, baseball, basketball, golf, NASCAR, soccer, kind of a little bit of a focus on women's sports, softball, tennis, all-inclusive. The bar atmosphere overall is gonna be a really welcoming, inclusive environment. We plan on doing events for game days, Husker game days, sponsoring some local sports, Creighton, UNO, Nebraska, of course. Get some soccer in there with the new soccer team that's here in Omaha. And then, yeah, we'll have some drink specials, food specials. Opening hours of operation are gonna be 10:00 a.m. to midnight, not 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to midnight. And we're looking to, yeah, just have some fun with it and add a good sports bar in Blackstone.
Well, and I know some of the food, you said you're gonna be open for lunch too, right?
Yes, yeah, American Gastro Pub. It'll be escalated stadium food, so we're looking to do a nice twist on, like, walking tacos, corn dogs, but with a little bit of upscale twist. So we'll have almost all gluten-free options, actually, with the exception of, I think, one of our corn dog mashes will have some gluten in it, but most of it'll be gluten-free. Yeah, walking tacos, we'll have the corn dog lineup. We'll have some fried Uncrustables, which is gonna be, I think, a hit. And then, and then, what else did I tell you that you want me to repeat?
Burgers and wings.
Oh, yeah, burgers and wings, yeah. Yeah, burgers and wings. The char-buff wings are gonna be delicious, and our burgers are gonna be, yeah, stellar too, so.
You knocked it out of the park, and it was good, it was really good talking to you and you and your partner that you're gonna... You put a lot of thought into this, I know, and it was a neat transition you told me you made, so I'm glad to support this today, and I'll look forward to getting in there for lunch and maybe a cold one and watch a little ballgame.
Yeah.
I wish you nothing but the best of luck up there in Blackstone. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, yeah. Yeah, we'll afford to hosting you. And all are welcome. We'll host you all, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I think there's a motion and a second. Row call.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding. Johnson. Rowe. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a class D liquor license for bottles and brews located at 10745 Mockingbird Drive.
Open the public hearing. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Michael Pulp, 2712 South 87th Ave. I'm here with Mr. Gebey, G-E-B-E-Y, to answer any questions.
All right, are you, are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Close the public hearing. Row call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Rowe. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, to consider a liquor license addition application for Blue Sky Bar and Patio located at 10730 Pacific Street, Suite 10, to add an indoor area.
Open the public hearing. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is in addition to Blue Sky, which will make way for some micro bowling at this location. So happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Close the public hearing. Row call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Rowe. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Items 10 through 14 can be considered together for Magnolia Trails located southeast of 216th and Ford Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. I think there is a request to withdraw items 10, 11, 12, and 14 from the Planning Department.
Second, row call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Rowe. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plot.
Open the public hearing. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Jeff Elliott, 20010 Manderson, here to represent the applicant. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Close the public hearing. Row call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Rowe. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thank you.
Items 15 and 16 can be considered together for property located northeast of 258th Plaza and West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 15, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District. Item 16, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow agricultural sales and service in the DR District.
We'll open the public hearing. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Madam President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Landahaw Nurseries. With me today also is Caleb Schneider of Lampreneers and the consultant engineers on this particular project. This is going to be Landahaw Nursery's wood waste recycling and soil improvement and soil quality restoration areas at 258th and West Center Road, Highway 92. This comes to you with favorable recommendations from the Planning Board, as well as a zoning board of appeals case that allowed the waivers to the pavement length that serves the property. We were able to accommodate the neighbor by flipping the entire site plan at Planning Board, and so we satisfied that neighbor. There is one letter that came in in opposition apparently this morning. I just wanted to address a couple things. I think they were worried about traffic. In this particular case, there's only a five to 10 incoming trucks a day, and only three to four outgoing trucks a day. They operate on a 10-hour day schedule, so from 8:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., and they don't operate all the time. So even a peak per hour rate is like an hour to two, or I'm sorry, one to two trucks per hour, so we're not talking about a lot of trucks. The recycling and the mulching area is really to serve only Landahaw Nursery. They're not having customers come out there. So the mulch materials, the soil materials, will be either taken back to Landahaw Nursery's main location or they'll be taken out to specific projects of Landahaw Nursery. So addressing that, there is no odor or smell here. These are just tree limbs and trees that they will be chopping up for mulch. There's no manure or anything like that that would smell. As far as the noise, we have to comply with the noise ordinance of the city of Omaha, so that issue's been dealt with. There was also, I think, one comment about the hill and the site distance, and Caleb Schneider told me that it's about 550 feet site distance between the hill and the actual entrance onto 258th Plaza. So we think all those issues have been addressed. I just wanted to get those out front here. And then with that, I'm happy to answer any particular questions that you might have regarding this proposed special use permit and use itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Close the public hearing. Row call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Rowe. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve the designation of a community redevelopment area in an extremely blighted area for the property located at 60th and Sorensen Parkway, as legally described on the agenda.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any proponents?
If I may have the map up, please. There we go. Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. We received a request from the owners of Home Team Auto Sales to do a CRA study. That's a community redevelopment area study. Of course, the purpose of doing the study is to see if the area in question meets the state criteria for designation as a CRA, and people want the CRA designation because it then opens up the area for eligibility for redevelopment projects to apply for the TIF program. As we always do, we begin by looking at an entire census tract. In this case, we're in the vicinity of 60th and Sorensen, and we're looking at Census tract 65.06, which is the entire outline of the, of that red outlined area, red boundary. I put this map up because it kind of puts it in context. We have the existing CRA designated areas shown in kind of a lavender color. And as you can see, that census tract is pretty well surrounded by existing CRA designated areas. And indeed, some portions within the existing census tract are already designated as CRAs. And as you may recall, you must meet both definitions in the state law of definition blighted and substandard to be designated as a CRA. We begin with the census tract, and if the entire tract meets the criteria, we are allowed to either designate the entire tract or narrow it up a little bit and designate some portion of that tract. It's kind of a cross-reference. We focused in on block group number two to see if it also meets the criteria. I would note that this corner here, that corner lot, is part of the Home Team Auto Sales property that would redevelop, and it's already designated as a CRA. They're looking at using the two lots immediately to the west for part of their modern two-story automobile dealership development that they are contemplating. Kind of jump ahead a little bit, we found that the area, entire census tract and block group two do meet the criteria in state law. Under the census data, the per capita income of the area is about $18,000 compared to, $18,000 per year compared to the citywide per capita income of $34,400. And the unemployment rate within the area exceeds 120% of the state unemployment rate. And that's how it meets the blighted definition. For substandard, I'd note that the infrastructure in the area shows some age and wear and could use some improvements. Overall, the buildings are not in terrible shape, but some of them are a little bit older. To meet the criteria, one of the criteria under state law is having an average building age of 40 years or older. The average age in block group two is 46 years. So it's not a terribly old area, but it does meet the threshold criteria. Anyway, after that, we did a drive-through of the area windshield survey. We looked at building conditions, infrastructure conditions. We also examined the future land use plan, the existing land uses in the area, and the zoning of the area to try to determine, you know, how much area is available for redevelopment projects, which sites look like they could be future redevelopment projects. Much of the area is already developed in single-family homes or schools or parks. We felt that the amount of redevelopment opportunities are limited. So we are therefore limiting our recommendation for the CRA designation to a small portion of census block group two, basically the crosshatch area bounded by red in this map. Now, we're also asked to look at extremely blighted area criteria. And there are just two there. One is the poverty rate, the other's unemployment. We found that in block group two, the poverty rate is 30.5%, which exceeds the 20% state threshold. And we found that unemployment was more than 200% of the statewide rate, which also meets the threshold. So bottom line is, we are recommending the area crosshatch here be designated as both CRA and EBA and allow things to proceed with that. I would note also for an EBA, this allows a tax credit for home buyers who are going to occupy the home they buy, a state income tax credit. If affordable housing projects come along, they get additional favorable consideration when they apply for, like, Lytec assistance. And also that EBA allows for a 20-year TIF term. But we recommend approval of this designation, both EBA and CRA. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Don, hurry. Thank you for providing all of that useful information during your presentation. I do have a few questions. What are some of the potential private investment do you think that might be interested in investing in this area?
Well, we launched a study because we know of the one investment of the auto dealership. Beyond that, I'm not familiar with any that may be coming.
So the city doesn't at this time have any other investment that they have in mind or are seeking for this area?
City investments? No, none.
Okay, and what types of projects are forecasted that will be beneficial to this area?
There's only the one project that we're looking at, and that would be increased taxable valuation of the property and would also be increased employment opportunities.
What might, let me put it this way. Since we are going to designate this as a CRA and EBA, what types of projects might be beneficial to this area? So in other words, as a city council representative, and I wanted to go out and canvas different investors or even inquire about some opportunities there, what kind of things might fit in that space?
Well, from a city perspective, we would like to see a highest and best use for these properties, and we, again, are focusing on this area for designation. The auto dealership would take up three of the properties. This is currently, I think, like a car wash. The other two properties could be anything.
So again, you don't have anything in mind.
High-density residential would be advantageous. More intensive commercial use might be advantageous. More jobs would be advantageous. But we don't go out and canvas or do some sort of marketing poll as to who might be interested. We look at the land use and see, is it suitable for economic redevelopment, and these sites are.
And have we, what type of outreach have we done to that particular area in terms of letting them know that this is being changed?
We held a neighborhood meeting a couple months ago. We sent out notices to all the neighborhood associations within one mile of this, of the boundaries of this area. When I sent out the notice and the letter explaining what we're doing, I included my name and phone number, and I asked them to distribute it to their memberships. And we held a meeting about two months ago. There was no interest in the meeting.
So you had a meeting two months ago about how many people attended the meeting?
I said we had no interest.
So no interest means zero came to the meeting?
Other than the developers, that's correct. We had nobody from the public. Pretty small area, and it's already developed commercial. I don't think there were a lot of concerns.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anything else?
That'll be it.
All right, I'm gonna, and I forgot, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and then Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. Don, I just wanted to just state for the record, I think it's, the area is zone CC, so obviously, anything that would, that's an allowable use within CC or permitted use within CC would be a potential user or use of property within that area, correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. Is there a motion? Row call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Rowe. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on Agenda Items 18 through 22 was held on July 11th, 2023. That's what I thought. And I believe item, we, there's been a request that item 21 be pulled from the agenda. Row call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Rowe. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 21, an ordinance to approve the Hamilton Village Senior Suites Tax Increment Financing Agreement.
The public hearing on Agenda Item 21 was held on July 11th, 2023.
I have a few questions.
I will recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you. City planning, I think Don is somewhere west here.
Eric England is present here in the back.
Oh.
I think Don has gone.
Eric, thank you. Can you help explain what tax increment financing is for the public as well as me?
So before you, it was the agreement, the public hearing was last week. It is my understanding that there was extensive conversation about the pros and cons about tax increment financing, both in general and specific to this project. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, so I would like, last week, I don't believe we addressed jobs. What are the number of jobs that may occur from this project?
Eric England, Planning Department. I can't speak to the specific number of jobs. As a reminder, this plan was approved by the TIF Committee, the Planning Board, and also by the city council in early June. This is the last step with the agreement.
So we have, so we're alleging that this TIF project will assist in job enrichment, but we don't have the number for that.
I don't recall that answer. I believe the developer, Melvin Sudbeck, did address that back in early June, and the hiring, and it's the construction for 59 apartment units.
I would have loved to have known what that number is and be, and someone would have been able to speak to that at this time since we're gonna be voting on it today rather than assuming that this would be a vote up, that we would have that information available if it was needed to be asked or answered. So I guess we have that, we don't have that information. So I guess this body is comfortable with voting yes and not doing due diligence and having all the information available. I'm not comfortable with that, so I won't be voting on this. I will be voting no on this. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
I wasn't here last week, so I don't know what may or may not have been, what information was provided in that regard. But I do know, since it is an apartment project, that probably it would be safe to assume that any jobs created by this mostly would be temporary in nature due to, it wasn't limited to the construction of, and any ongoing operation and maintenance as a real regard to the ongoing... the ongoing concern of the, the running of the apartments, there might be some jobs associated with that. So what it does is it provides some additional housing stock. It's, it's been approved by the TIF Committee. It's been through the Planning Board for, for the redevelopment plan as well as our council for the redevelopment plan. And now back through Planning Board for the redevelopment agreement. And now to us for the redevelopment agreement. So I, I think there's been plenty of scrutiny and vetting of the project. So I'm very comfortable, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Councilman Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you. I too, I just wanted to let the public know that we did go through this in detail like a month ago, or maybe more than a month ago, where the developer was here and answered those kinds of questions and laid out the plan on how many square feet it was, how many apartments there were, the anticipated rent that was going to be projected from those, whether it be a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom unit. And I think he even talked about some of the construction jobs. So I think we've been through that. I think we already approved that. And this is, I'll be voting yes because it's just a formality to approve the agreement with the city. So appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
I just would like for it to be a point of information that no, we did not discuss the job, the temporary construction job last week. Mr. Rowe, but I really appreciate you for being able to recall that that happened. Mr. Harding, since you weren't here last week, I'm really appreciative of, of your input about what was discussed. But again, I say that this is a vote that we're voting on today. And no one felt the need to have the individual that will be doing this project here in attendance. And we have the Planning Department that cannot answer these questions that were alleged to have been answered two months ago. So then I guess I should be able to go through the minutes and the recordings two months ago and retrieve that information. It would have been nice to have that information today since we're voting on it today. Again, we have a responsibility to do due diligence. I'm not so sure that we have that here today. Thank you.
Councilman Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. It was, my intention was to talk about the meeting that we had a month ago, maybe more than a month ago. It wasn't last week. It was quite some time ago where the developer stood before us and laid out the details of his project. And I think we made a vote then to accept the project. And again, this, to me, this is more a formality of what we already voted for.
That's correct. And I, I think everybody's had the opportunity. At this point, I haven't had the opportunity to talk, and then I'll get with others. But we did vote on the TIF project. So the TIF project and TIF application, we saw that in June. And within the TIF application, one of the requirements is you have to list the jobs. And that's part of the TIF application. Today, we don't have the TIF application in front of us because we passed the TIF application already. And so what's in front of us is the redevelopment agreement. If we go back and pull the TIF application from June, it does list and have all that information in it. So I just wanted to be clear, I understand where, I think both council persons are coming from. So I just wanted to, to make that point. And Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Again, I understand what is before us. And I understand the back and forth regarding the issue as it relates to the number of jobs that will be created through construction. However, again, we should have that information today. City planning should have that information today. If it's in the record, we discussed it two months ago, we should have that information. And for us to somehow indicate that we discussed something two months ago gives us a green light that we don't need to discuss it today, I find that absurd. And again, you can only speak what is relevant to your comfortability as it relates to doing due diligence. You cannot speak for mine.
If I may, Eric England, Planning Department. So just looking back at the application.
Mr. England, I'll recognize you if you would like to share something.
I would, yes. So on the June 6 city council meeting, that was voted by approval six to zero. Within the application, this project is expected to create about seven new permanent full-time jobs, about 30 part-time jobs, and about 30 construction-related jobs.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. England. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Mr. England, I'm sorry. Could you repeat, what was the vote on, on the June date that that was in front of this council?
Six to zero approved.
So unanimously?
Yes.
And the only one absent from that meeting would have been Palermo?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Sure, the relevance of there being six votes when this was voted on has no bearing on the fact that I asked the question, how many jobs this would generate. And I would like for it to be clear for my constituents as well as the public that that is where I was going with my line of questioning. And the fact that I voted on that or not voted on that has no relevancy to the question that was asked today. As a matter of fact, we could have just answered the question when the question was asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Or I would have unanimous vote today on this project like we did in June. Thank you.
There's no further lights. There's been a motion and a second roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 23 through 32 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, your address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. So we'll open the public hearing on 23 through 32. Anyone here to speak on agenda items 23 through 32 as proponents or opponents?
Wee Cimenes, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I am a proponent on 31. That the mayor recommends a purchase of a 2023 Chevrolet Silverado, 1,500 trunk for Parks Recreation and Public Property Department. I'm not against the city buying equipment. What I'm concerned about is the type of the equipment being bought. And just to be short with this, you've approved a climate action plan of development. And the sooner the city starts to incorporate some of those concepts, the sooner we will get to approving a plan. So one important aspect is lowering emission rates. So buying a, so the city buying more fuel-efficient vehicles is, is going to be crucial to that plan. And I know Mr. President said that some to the effect of we'll cross that bridge when we get there. I just want to remind the council that it took a while for the executive branch to bring forth a resolution. So we're still waiting on the particulars. And by the city using fuel-efficient vehicles could be crucial to that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on agenda items 23 through 32? Seeing none? Close the public hearing. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 33, in ordinance loving a special tax and assessment for snow and ice removal in the district number SWSR 2023-01 is amendment of the whole requested by the Public Works Department.
Hearing was already held on this. I see no lights. Is there any motions? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 34, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for Swanson Tower Association, Inc. versus City of Omaha in the amount of $2,199,540.
The public hearing on agenda item number 34 is today. Are there any proponents?
Jeffrey Bloom, City of Omaha Law Department, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 35, in ordinance to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to DPC Industries, Inc. in the amount of $80,000 for sodium hydroxide bulk shipments.
The public hearing on agenda item 35 is today. Open the public hearing. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Item 36, in ordinance to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Toddco Barricade for barricading services for the various locations throughout the city.
Public hearing on agenda item 36 is today. Open the public hearing. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close public hearing.
Item 37, in ordinance to approve an agreement for trash collection services for the Omaha Housing Authority.
Public hearing on agenda item number 37 is today. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. No lights.
Non-action items, items 38 through 58 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Have a motion? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Rowe, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:42.